November 6, 2019 is in session. The time is now 7:03. Would you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance for the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the roll call. Nick Kern. David Perron.
Deborah Phillips.
Michael Caruso.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
In consideration of the minutes of the last meeting, have you all had a chance to read it? Any objections, corrections, revisions? May I have a motion to approve the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 2, 2019, as submitted.
Do I have a second on motion?
Second.
Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Stand.
Yes. Motion passes. Old business, application 19-9.110, Pogmore Drive, request for administrative approval, which is granted on, I'm sorry, on October 2, 2019. Does you have any comment, Erin?
Yes, Chairman Vitale, as you know, is the only one certified to do the administrative approvals. So it was at the meeting, he did it later at the meeting. So the reason I put it on the agenda is so that the public knows it got its administrative approval. Otherwise, people might be wondering, where did that one go if I just left it out? So the law department said I should put it on and say, grant it, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Then we can move on to application 1819-9.2, 12 Oak Colony Road, installation of drainage swale and berm. This, Erin?
Yes, I believe the applicant, this appears two times on the agenda tonight, Mr. Acting Chairman. It appears under new, the applications, but also appears under violations.
Right, I saw that.
So we might as well combine them both into one, and the applicant is here to present his application tonight. You can come up to the table and speak your name into the microphone for the recording secretary, if you would.
Good evening. Bill Hoynek, H-O-Y-N-A-C-K, representing Old North Colony Properties LLC, this permit application.
Excuse me, sir, what is your role? Are you an engineer, attorney, or?
No, I am not. I am the Director of Environmental Operations in the company.
For the company.
For the company, thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that my environmental planners' report went out in the first packet, it went out October 31st, it went out Thursday, in the big packet, the big brown packet, and what it says is, we've been working on this for a while, and Commissioner Kern and I went out there, Nick Kern, we went out on October 25th to see how they were progressing. To recap what happened, there were a series of violations, a number of violations out there, they addressed them all, they were very cooperative, this is a large stockpile operation on Old Colony Road. So they dealt with all the erosion situations, and it was looking good, and then they did a mapping, they did a survey, they had Rose Page go out there and survey it, and they realized that they had encroached into the inland wetland jurisdictional area about 25 feet at the greatest, about 15 feet for the most part, in clearing for their stockpiles and so on. So after they got all this stockpile material out of the jurisdictional area, it was bare. And so in discussions, it became clear it would be a good idea to use that encroachment area as a drainage area. In other words, it would solve their problem of how are we going to drain this, because the Wetland Commission didn't want it to drain over the slope, that would lead to erosion over the years, so we didn't want that. So this was a perfect solution, since that area that they had already used without a permit, they could just apply for a permit and use it legitimately for their drainage swale. So that's what they did, and that's what happened, and they applied a month ago, and Chairman Vitale actually let them start, and the reason he let them start is that it was eroding, so it was like, better do this, it's a correction, we're going to treat it as a correction, you start on this and everything will be great if you build it as designed. And like I said, on October 25th, Commissioner Kern and I went out there, I don't know if Nick wants to add anything to what we saw out there.
Erin, the only thing I wanted to bring up was you talked about talking to the town engineer, did you have a chance to talk to him about what was going to take place for the next six months, and he was comfortable with it, or no?
No, he has not.
You haven't?
He's swamped at the moment, so no, he hasn't gotten back to me. They're going to apply to planning and zoning, so he has a chance to, you're talking about the drainage up top, is that your concern?
Well, basically, the overall picture, the zac fire in the driveway with a stone need to be done to get rid of the mud pad, and then the stabilization of the base, and then what he's done up to now, so I mean, we're good till next spring, and then we're just going to start back up again with checking to see how everything takes hold.
Right, how it overwinters, and in fact, today I went out there for the final check, because you and I, when we were out there, we had about four things that we said, could you beef this up a little bit, or this was a concern over here? And we went out there, I went out there today, and they put in a big anti-tracking pad, large stone, and what I didn't realize is they do it every week, they renovate it every week, they use a big, is it a?
Excavator.
And they actually pull it out to shake, get the dirt off, they're putting the stone on back again, so, and that's, it's a very active site, as you know, so it's, they track a lot of mud out there, so they have to constantly be at it, so they put in this very sizable anti-tracking pad, so that's good. They also beefed up those two other areas on the far side, there was a stone, maybe you want to present, so everybody knows what we're talking about, there's, in their application, which they're asking you to consider tonight, the drawing, it went out in the October packet, it's, what the commission's going to be asked to approve is a 15-foot wide swale, drainage swale, within the Upland Review Area. So do you want to talk about it, Bill?
Yeah, you're stealing my thumb there.
Oh, sorry.
Go over there and use, if you want to, if you want to put it on the easel and use your?
I don't know if that's, it's not going to really hold up.
It's not going to hold up.
Did everyone, everyone receive this, right?
Back in October, in the October packet.
Okay, so as Erin said, we started all this work as part of the NOV that came out back in April 16th, okay? And one of them was just for a washout area that went down to the stream, we dug everything out of the stream, got that all out of there within a month, month and a half, stabilized the whole bank and everything, and we were working on a couple other items, and one of the things that Erin wanted is she wanted us to have a surveyor come out and map out the wetlands area, the 50-foot setback, the buffer. So we did that, it was at that point that it discovered that some filling had occurred in that 50-foot area. So we then, through a series of meetings over here, decided that what we probably should do is apply for the permit, we were going to remove a bunch of the material that was within the swale area, take that material out, there was going to be about a three to three and a half foot soil and vegetated berm on the other side of that, on the hill, which was going to remain, because going through the exercises of, should we reach over to an excavator and pull that material back, we decided it was probably going to cause more harm than good, because we were going to destroy all the vegetation, all the trees, all the bushes, everything that had been over there, and that hill, if you're not familiar, that whole area is basically asphalt and concrete, so it takes a long time for stuff to grow on that hill. So leaving that berm, I think, added another sense of measure of security, that if anything went through the work area and through the swale, it wouldn't go through the berm and end up down in that dry creek bed or transient creek bed that's there. So Erin suggested that we apply for the permit, which we did back on September 30th, and implement all those measures. Now, Nick had been out, and I think, as Erin had mentioned, she asked the commissioner to approve us moving forward and implementing these, the reason being, we wanted to try to get the grass swale growing and have some vegetation for the winter time, and we made pretty good progress in just that. Mother Nature threw us a curveball, some cold days, and we don't have the vegetation we want near, but I'm sure by the end of May, the thing will be, you won't even be able to see the bottom. So we applied for it, as Erin said, she got the approval from the commissioner to implement these things, we implemented the swale, we put in the check dams, the stone check dams, we put in the hay bale check dam at the end, we connected the prep area in the back to the existing sedimentation basin, so now we have a swale around old sides of the yard. Originally, it was just on the east side, the west side was kind of a gradual drain over the hill, the way it was approved in 2008, now that goes into the swale, everything goes into the sedimentation basin. We were asked to make sure that we had marked the wetlands boundary with signs, I don't know, every 50 feet or something like that, that they're out there, and we have implemented all these measures already, they are there and they are functioning. Erin was out today to take a look at the last things, some additional rock that she wanted, a little stabilization, the tracking pad, and all that was.
And just so that, at least my mind's wrapped around it, the items that we approved on this administrative approval really are the heavy-duty things he's going to do on the permit, is that true?
Yes, basically, the work.
Basically, basically, true, because I think.
The work is 95% done at this point in time, yes.
Okay.
Because at the request of Chairman Vitale to get it stabilized, we didn't want any more problems, so we kind of blended the correction of violation in with what they wanted under this application.
Okay.
Yes, and we're very pleased with the way it turned out, I want to show you some photographs of, if you'd like to see them.
No, I.
No?
Well, if you have them, then we can pass them out, sure. But I guess my question goes, is there now, is there more to be done before we can sign off on the violation, or are we, or can we wrap this up tonight?
Microphone.
All right, just the two pictures, one was of the big anti-tracking pad I saw this morning, and the other is of, Bill just mentioned it, an area I was a little bit concerned with, because water might run off that spot, that's right by the anti-tracking pad, so I asked him to put a little bit of stone right there to make sure the water wasn't going to run off that giant soil pile into the anti-tracking pad, because that's, you don't want that, you don't want more mud in there. Now, in answer to your other question, in going back to the environmental planners' report that went on October 31st, I am recommending approval of the application, we can go through the conditions of approval, some of these, we can knock out half of them, because he's already done half of these, and then at the, on page, bottom of page three, I say regarding the violation and so on, and I might talk about that, which we can get into that, but I'm recommending that you, I'll put it in one sentence, I'm recommending that the commission act to lift the notice of violation, and there is a but, though, and the but is, we do have a separate erosion problem down at the corner of South Broad Street and where it meets Old Colony Road. I am suggesting you consider that a separate issue, and the reason I'm suggesting that you, it was in the original notice of violation, but I'm suggesting, let's break it off, let's make it its own situation, because its resolution is a long, difficult one that involves the state of Connecticut, the town of Wallingford, and the owners of 1120 South Broad Street and the owners of 12 Old Colony Road. So I'm now suggesting, for the ease of life, just to break it out and treat it separately.
So, just going through and getting your recommendation, we want to approve his application with the, you're recommending that we approve his application with the recommendations.
With the conditions, number one, let's go through them, it's on page three, forget about number one, he's already done that, okay, he's already put in the anti-tracking pad, forget about number two, he's already done that, he beefed up the swale.
Okay, so take off one, take off two.
And number three, he beefed that up, he already did that.
He's already done that?
Yep, already put the placards, I saw them there this morning, now, so I'm suggesting the rest you keep.
Five, six, seven, and eight.
Yeah, so let's change the numbers on them.
Okay, which are going to go now to be one, two, three, four, okay? And then, on the notice of violation, we would vote to remove the notice of violation with the, for these activities, and they're saying, you're talking about a, you've got another, okay, what's that, we can remove the notice of violation for these activities only?
Right, for activities up at the stockpile, and direct, if you would direct me as staff to pursue the other one, not to forget about it, but to pursue it, but in a different way.
Okay.
As I mentioned, there's a lot of parties involved in that, so it gets complicated.
Okay, now, second question, we have any comments, are there any comments from the members of the commission?
Okay, I think the only way you're going to do this, Erin, is to make a motion to remove the notice of violation and add the one, two, and three as spoken, I don't think there's any way you're going to be able to read them off unless you want three, four, and five, or five.
Right, you can say the original.
Well, what I was going to ask the motion to be made, or, is that, so, should we prove, we're going to, we're going to approve the, or note the approval of the administrative approval, and that takes care of everything, then you want, then I, my understanding, okay, then we're going to move to approve his application, the conditions of approval are going to be numbers one, two, three, and four on page three, the environmental's plan.
Well, you could say the last four conditions.
Okay, last four conditions, either way.
Yeah, yeah, that's maybe more.
And then, and we'll take care of that, then we're going to deal with the notice of the violation, so now, notice of the violation for the activities covered in the application and the administrative approval.
No, I would say just lift the notice of violation.
And just lift the whole viol, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then separate from that, just maybe.
Then we're going to direct you to do a new note.
Exactly, exactly, just direct me not to forget about the issue on the corner of South Broad Street and Old Colony Road.
That'll be addressed with planning and zoning, too, and everybody else.
And that's your last sentence in that, your report? Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, do we just take notice that the administrative approval is granted? Yeah, I mean, I mean, normally, okay, you're, as you go back to the top, you had this administrative approval on A19-9-2, so at this point, we're just taking notice that that was granted?
Oh, okay, it wasn't really, it wasn't a formal administrative approval on this, no, I understand why you're getting confused, no, this is a regular application.
Okay, so we're just, so forget about the administrative approval up here, and we're just going to approve the application?
Yes.
But you got to lift the notice of violation first.
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you for pointing that out.
Yes.
Okay, so then, it would entertain a motion that the notice of violation 12-12 Oak Colony Road be lifted, a motion on that?
Motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violation on 12 Oak Colony Road be lifted, and that staff will pursue the issue of transport of sediment to the stream at the base of Old Colony Road.
Sir, second on the motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote.
It's just going to let you move forward with what you need to do.
Yes, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Okay, okay, call for a vote.
No, no.
Yes.
No, yes, wait a minute.
It's okay.
Okay, call for a vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, okay, the notice of violation is lifted, now, entertain a motion that application A-9, A19-9.2, 12 Oak Colony Road, Old North Colony Properties LLC be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A19-9.2, 12 Oak Colony Road, Old North Colony Properties LLC, the installation of drainage swale and berm be approved, with the conditions of approval as listed in the environmental planners' report of October 31st, the last four on page three.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
Deb? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Second, at this point, the chair would like to direct the environmental planner to issue a notice of violation for certain items that are remaining. Is that good enough?
No, you can't do that.
Can we?
No, because there's no violations left, or just, these are cleanups for the last four, cleanups of the violation that was committed.
No, no, she's not issuing for that, she said there's an other issue, separate and apart from this.
We've already directed her to pursue that.
We did?
Yes.
Yeah, it's 12 Oak Colony.
Yeah.
That's down by the state, the problem with the, the problem with the state is they're so slow, that it may be a year or two before they act on it.
Yeah, the area that they're referring to, if you have any photos over there, I've got some over here, we don't own the property.
Oh.
The water, the water comes off of Old North Colony, North Colony, and 150, and the water drains from three different areas, okay, and it conveniently comes into this area of 1120, we own 1120, but where the water comes in and goes into, or possibly enters into, the brook is a DOT easement, okay? So there's, we've taken temporary measures, we've implemented them immediately with hay bales and everything, and we have diverted, you can see sediment does accumulate within that area, but there's really nothing that we can do within an area, because we don't own it. So I know, we've had discussions with Casey Hand, too, about that, that the town has, I guess, tried to talk to the DOT, but I don't know what's going on, so it's hard for us to move forward and do anything, because we don't, we can't.
Okay, I mean, okay, so I mean, you can move dirt around, but you can't move the DOT, so it's, I can understand.
Well, the drain, and the drainage, it just conveniently comes there, I mean, and that is the problem right there.
So in that case, sir, is there anything else we need to do on this property tonight?
No, but let me just reiterate that I will be looking at this with the town engineer, the town planner, to see how we can keep that dirt out of that intersection, because it's unacceptable, it finds its way into the river, we got, got to deal with it, whether it's the town, the state, these folks, we'll deal, we'll work on it.
Okay.
It's not acceptable, it can't stay like that, we got to do something.
It's been like that for 30 years, Erin, 20 years ago, they widened that road, because it used to be just a little lane and a half, and the state came in and blew that whole corner out, and they left that there the same way it was for the last 50 years, so the state, I don't know what their approach is or why they're doing that, because they had the opportunity then, when they widened the road and made it a three-lane road, two-in-one, you know, you've got one going to the east and two coming to the west, but they left that water problem there, they don't even clean out that swale where we stood and did the investigation, I haven't seen them once in there with a backhoe, cleaning it up so the water would flow freely, it's kind of like an eyesore they don't want to see, so I don't know how we can fire them up to come over there and work with these guys, but it's been ongoing for the last 30 or 40 years, so.
Well.
And when we get a rainstorm in the winter, when the ground is frozen, it's just like a river coming across the road, they're going up to, down towards the river, so.
Oh, it's also a water problem, I didn't know it was also a water problem, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, go stand there on a good rainy day at that corner and watch how much water comes into that area, and then, when you get there in the wintertime and they're throwing sand down, because that intersection, they sand the heck out of it, you watch it during a rainstorm, and how much sediment comes straight into that area.
Moving on.
We're all set, then?
All set?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, new business, I see nothing, and there, received new applications, A-19-11.1739 North Main Street. This, Erin?
Yes, that's the community pool, the one you just named off, one, 739 North Main Street Extension, that's the community pool property, the town's property, and originally, they were thinking about presenting a little, you know, a preliminary presentation tonight, but they decided not to, they're going to give the full presentation at the December meeting for the new pool.
Okay, but I may be missing something, but has the application been submitted, or?
I just handed it out tonight, I think they came in yesterday or the day before with, there it is.
Okay, so this is swinging, hold my hand.
Right, I gave two, two applications tonight, the pool, the one about the community pool, and the next one, and the applicant for the next one is in the audience, and let me just say that we do have some more violations to deal with, and I'm a little bit surprised, I was expecting some of the violation folks to be here tonight, they're not here yet, but if you want to, if the chairman wishes to have a little appetizer on this next application.
Yeah, because I see this in my hand, and obviously, I, you know, that might need some explanation, so on application A19-11.2, 425 South Cherry Street, is that, Mr., the applicant appears to be here, and if he'd like to give us a short presentation so that we know what we're looking for when we review this application for next month.
Good evening, my name's Jeff Dewey, I'm with BL Companies, and I will be brief to, as I understand, this is a preliminary introduction, so don't want to eat up too much of your time. Basically, this is an application.
Excuse me, sir, if you'd like to use the thing in your.
It might be easier this way, that way I can actually point things out.
Okay.
Otherwise, but thank you very much, I think this would be easier. Basically, this is our site at 425 South Cherry Street, north is essentially in that direction to your right, and as you can see, it's right on the corner of Penn Road, Ball Street, and South Cherry Street. This is an existing warehouse, there's asphalt parking all the way around all three front sides right now, this is a gravel parking area, this is a gravel parking area that was leased at some point, but the lease has since expired, and it's not being used right now. The general site back here has been used by Public Works for excavation of sand materials and stuff, for. of sand materials and stuff, for sanding during the winter, and they also used it for depositing miscellaneous materials, fill materials and stuff, waste soils that they have in need from projects around town. So you, you, when you see the plans, you'll get a better idea of it. You probably can't see it now, but there's a series of stockpiles of different materials and debris and such on the site. It's, the site's been defunct for some time now. What we're proposing on behalf of our client is essentially a warehouse-type use. This is the I-40 zone, which is similar to what it was used for before, but we're also gonna have some distribution functions from this that is different from what it was previously used as. So basically, looking around the site again, the orientation is the same. North is that way to your right. There's no changes to the building. We will maintain the parking on these two sides, which is the north and the west side, and removing all the parking on the east side to give us more green space coming around and give it a little more curb appeal and so forth and reduce some of the impervious area. The bulk of the paving will be in the back where we have employee parking and vehicle staging areas, which basically is parking, and a loading dock here on the southwest side of the existing building. Our proposal is to take all the roof water, well, let me just say this before I get into quick drainage field. Currently, there is no detention. There is no water quality treatment. The site basically drains, the roof has a bunch of roof leaders all around the building that discharge to the ground. Most of the building that discharges here and here gets into the Pent Road drainage system. This whole side basically also gets to the Pent Road draining, drainage system as most of the site drains this way and into the catch basin here and then out. So what we're proposing is we're taking all the roof area into an infiltration system here, and then all this parking area into another infiltration system here. We'll also be providing hydrodynamic separators in line to remove the suspended solids and so forth prior to being discharged into these systems. These two systems have been designed so that there will be no increase in the rate of runoff from the site for the typical 2, 10, 25, and 100-year design storms. And again, as I said, we've also increased some green all the way around to bump up the aesthetics of the parcel. The only area that we are not proposing to infiltrate into the ground is obviously over here, there's no need to. We're taking pavement away and making a green space. This parking that we reduced the impervious area for, we're gonna put into a hydrodynamic separator for water quality prior to discharge into the Pent Road drainage system. So in summary, we're reducing the peak flow that's going into the drainage system. This system has been designed to infiltrate all of the water quality volume from the paved areas. This system has been designed to infiltrate all of the water quality volume for the building, and certainly it'll infiltrate more, but we sized it so that's the minimum, at the very least, it will do.
Okay, so just make sure.
I'm sorry, that's a lot of.
Okay, no, 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 actually it is, but the reason why we're here is because of impervious area. We're not here because you're drained in.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I just wanted to be absolutely sure on that.
And that is the reason, because there's no wetlands out or near the site. That is the reason we're here, is the definition of a regulated activity includes the creation of 20,000 square feet of impervious area. We have roughly 46,000 we're proposing.
Okay, is that here? Any comments?
Well, I will be looking closely at this. I just got it a few days yesterday, I think.
Okay.
But.
Not done yet.
But it does, I will note, it does discharge, that system in Pent Road does discharge to the marsh, the marsh on Oliver Creek Road. So I will be looking at that, and I asked the applicant to look at that marsh and the condition of the marsh today and after what they're proposing, what, how that condition will change. So that's another way to look at this application.
And even though this is only information, any comments from any commissioners?
Okay, Mr. Herr. Sitting here by myself. Has that area been released from aquifer protected, or is that still an aquifer protected area?
I never knew it was.
Um, it's, I, I believe it was aquifer. That area of South Cherry Street was, some of it was aquifer and some of it wasn't, and then they released some of it when they did the big change, so I'm not sure. Can we check to see if there, that is an aquifer area?
Sure.
He didn't talk about water oil separators or any of that kind of stuff, so can you just check with Water Department to see if there is any area down there that is still considered aquifer, because that's, basically that's where the aquifer is. It runs right down South Colony Cherry.
Right. I think you're talking about like a plan for future aquifer, future well, like, right?
Yeah.
Future well, right, okay.
All right, got you.
Just so to add to your comment, all the catch basins will have the snout-type oil-water separator systems in it, and as I mentioned, everything goes into the hydrodynamic separator, which also will remove floatables. So there is some in-place components to help with the water quality as far as the floatable.
With a maintenance program?
Yes, yes, the maintenance program is at the, the last appendix within the drainage report.
Okay, what about snow shelving? Were you planning on doing that?
Uh, yes, that's what, one of the reasons we provided all the green space around here was to allow for some snow shelving and stuff, and it'll be pitched back into the pavement so it will drain through the system.
So the contractor's not gonna push it up on the lawn?
Correct. No, like up in here, they will push it up on the lawn, but it's all pitched to drain back towards the pavement.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll see you next month.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, next item, the meeting schedule for 2020.
Yes, I sent out a draft of schedule, and we can kick it around a little bit, but it'd be good if, if the commission approved it tonight. That would help. Want a copy? Mr. Chairman, would you like a copy?
Yes, I would. I had mine, and I thought it was, let me just make sure it's not in my package. Okay, because in your draft, you have a few alternates and suggestions. So again, it's, you know, you've got January 2nd, February 5th, March 4th, April 1st, these are just the first Wednesdays. Now, July, you have July 1st or July 8th or July 15th?
It's what, at the commission's pleasure. Usually, you know, it's typically around the 16th, 17th, 18th of July, but you can switch it up. Sometimes it's based on people's future plans. They already have plans for a certain week.
Our commissioners, any, we have any, anybody has a preference on this?
I'm just wondering, Erin, it doesn't look like we're busy enough if January 2nd, Tuesday or January 8th, I mean, we can always cancel the meeting, but Tuesday's the day after the 1st of the year.
Well, it's whatever you wanna do. We might not, might not be able to get this room, but that's okay. We'll get room 313, 315 upstairs, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Do you wanna agenda January 8th, and then we can always cancel it? Because you're saying that we can't have here the 2nd and the 8th? I'm not quite sure what, you gave us two, an option.
Oh, because some people are doing something else every Tuesday night, you know?
Oh.
So the 8th at least is a Wednesday night. That was the thinking, but whatever you wanna do, whatever.
Oh, I can see.
Why not January 3rd? I'm not sure, typically.
That'd be what, a Thursday night, right?
That's a Fri.
A Friday, Friday night, you say?
Yeah.
No, Wednesday would be, the 3rd would be the 3rd, I mean, Terry 3rd would be a Wednesday, right?
You got January 2nd is Tuesday, or the 8th. Why can't we go January 3rd, which was Wednesday? Or is that just wrong? I'm only going by what you gave us for a draft.
Okay.
Not to make it difficult.
Does anyone have a calendar here? I'm sorry, I didn't bring a calendar.
January 2nd's a Thursday.
January 2nd is a Thursday.
Thursday.
Okay, that's why. My secretary did this, so, yes.
The 1st is a Wednesday.
Correct, so do you wanna have it on the Thursday, January 2nd, or the next week, which would be January 8th?
The 8th.
Which would be 8th.
Okay.
And you can always cancel it.
You can do it. Now for July, nobody has any objections. We had it in the middle of the month last time.
We had on the 17th, 18th.
Okay.
Typical.
You had 1st, 8th, or 15th?
Yeah.
I wish giving you wiggle room, you know, whatever you wanna do.
I think the 15th, I kinda like the 15th. Anybody?
Yeah, makes more sense.
Okay, so we have the 15th. August 5th or no meeting? I think that.
Since we're doing 15th of July, let's do no meeting in August.
No meeting in August, okay.
That works. tends to work every year.
Yeah, and it, and it's kinda slow. Then we have the 2nd of September, October 7th, November 4th, and December 2nd. Okay, so.
The only one you have to talk to will be Mr. Vitale, right, as far as where we go with this, or how does this work now? What's the next step for this?
Well, Chairman Vitale will be back on the 17th of November, so I guess.
That means it would be, it would be, but is there any, does it make it easier for doing your job or for the smooth administration of the town hall if this is approved tonight?
Yeah, yes, it does, and developers like to plan ahead, you know, people call us up all the time, and, you know, it might make it a little smoother if we just go ahead and approve it tonight, is what I'm saying.
Okay, well, there's four of us here.
And all four seem to be in agreement.
But plus, if Chairman Vitale, he can always call a special meeting, you know?
I'm sure he'll be fine with whatever we decide on.
Right, right.
All right. So what I, okay, so then can I have a motion approve the memo, the draft, the draft memorandum of the inland wetlands and water courses commission meeting schedule for 2020 with, using January 8th, July 8th, no meeting in August, and the other dates?
July 15th, sorry.
July 15th.
I'm sorry, July 15th, I'm sorry, and with the other meeting dates listed on the memorandum.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the draft of the inland wetlands and water course commission meeting schedule for 2020, using January 8th, July 15th, no meeting in August, and then the other dates as listed.
Okay, do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, moving on, reports and communications. This is, when I look at it, is there anything in this, Mr. Herr, is there anything in these reports and communications that you feel you need to comment on?
No, except I'm going to the Kackawick Conference, and so is Commissioner Phillips, and I encourage anyone else.
Eilis too, I think.
Who is?
Eilis is going to.
Oh, Eilis is going too, okay, and, and you get reimbursed for your registration fee, so that's happening. Let's see.
Do you register for us, or we've got to do the registration ourselves?
Either way.
All right, because I thought it used to be the town sending it one check to pay for everybody, or anybody that was gonna go. Has that changed?
Yes, it's changed. We send it, if you get it to me soon enough, I send it, and if you don't, then I just reimburse you. You, you pay them directly and I give you your money back, so.
Okay.
Now, moving on to the, moving on to item I violations, 988 Center Street.
Okay, the, the environmental planners' report went out in the first packet on Thursday, the brown packet, so you should all have it there. It's, and I, I go through the status of it. Actually, I've been going out there a lot, checking up on them. Basically, they've done everything that we asked for. They removed the fill and sand from around that poor old oak tree, and the grass is coming in real nice, but the, I have a big disappointment out there is that they were supposed to put the planting plan in. David Lord told me it was coming. Everyone told me it was coming, and I called David Lord, and he goes, oh, yeah, it's coming, and then it's just not happening. So made some more phone calls, and then finally, a few days ago, their attorney sent in a letter saying, here is a receipt. We ordered all the plants, but we're not putting them in till next spring. Now, that was a, I mean, can we wait till next spring? Well, yeah, I guess we can wait till next spring, but the commission specifically, I mean, Chairman Vitale specifically said, you get that planting in this fall, and we put it in within the, when we were reaffirming the notice of violation stays in place, and we were reaffirming that. So, and as far as the planting plan, I wrote on page two with it in details, it, it's quite a hefty planting plan. They were proposing 55 trees, 60 shrubs, and 200 plugs of marsh plants. Those are little things about yay big, you stick them in like this. They call them plugs. So it's, it's quite a, quite a hefty planting plan. So that's where we are.
Mr. Herr.
Do we have anything in writing that they told us that the planting would win this fall before the cold weather set in?
We have, let's see, I, I investigated, I looked at that when I was writing this. Let me see what we got here. On October 2nd, the Wetland Commission voted, notice of violation remains in effect, and that the commission desires that planting be done by fall, and that the sand around the oak tree be removed. I, I'd have to look in the wetland report that David Lord, if he committed to a fall planting. Do you want me to check that?
No, you don't have to check on that. I would like to check on it, though, and if they committed themselves to have the work done and it's not done, talk to Janice and see about giving them a cease and desist, stop all operations until the plantings are in, because this is, they're reneging on their promise to have this done. We bent a little bit with the way they trashed the backyard there and the promise that they would straighten that out and have the plantings in for fall. Now, all of a sudden, because fall is here, they don't wanna do it. So there's gotta be some recourse to straighten this out, but I would talk to Janice and see if there's some way we can shut them down until the planting is, or the trees you can plant till the ground is frozen, and the shrubs and that all can be planted. This is a perfect month for them because they go dormant, and they get a whole winter to sleep before they get hardy and verity, or variety in the spring. So it's up to you, but that's the route I would go, because I'm tired of playing with this guy.
Right, I, I did call some nurseries, and everybody agreed Thanksgiving was.
The end.
Pretty much the end.
So, I mean, am I wrong in thinking that he didn't live up to his obligation, that we gave him slack on this? There's gotta be some recourse, that's what I believe.
Well, let me just play devil's advocate. It's not like he's never gonna do it. He's saying he's gonna do it in the spring, so maybe if he doesn't do in the spring, then that's, because he's only got two more weeks to put those plants.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'll go ahead.
Okay, but on the other hand, I mean, I'm, I was all for putting the, you know, my remedy's always to put a lean on something. I think Nick has something that's better, but, yeah, again, you know, I think, what was it, in April or so, we approved, or in June, right, and here we go, and the whole summer goes by, it's going on, and I don't know why they're doing it, okay, why they're not doing it, and, but, you know, we have a wetlands application, we have to approve it, we have to protect it. They're not holding up their end of the line, so that I would say, you know, your conversations with Ms. Small, cease and desist should be part of the conversation as addition of putting a lean on the property, because you say, because when you say, well, that doesn't mean they're never gonna do it. Well, if, you know, if they're not gonna do it now, when are they gonna do it? And so we'll be, and we'll be here in June or July, and where's, you know, where's the plantings? So no, I think the hard line here is appropriate.
All right, so you would act to keep the non-survival. All right, so you wouldn't act to keep the nonviolation in place, I want, no matter what else you might want to do, to at least do that, right?
Okay, and then you're going to, and then you'll take the follow-up, and any other comments from the commissioners?
May I, excuse me, I just want to correct, just clarify something, we don't call it a lien, we don't have such, you know, financial...
It's a letter, notice of...
It'd be to put the notice of violation on the land records.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And so at this point, we need a motion to keep the violation in effect? In effect?
That's, that's one part, yes.
Okay, so, okay, so that we know the other things you're going to do, so at this point, I'd entertain a motion that the notice of violation of 988 East Center Street be kept in effect.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violation in 988 East Center Street Benchmark Land Development be kept in effect.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay.
Erin, it's not a hardship here, because if you go by there during the day and see the operation that's going on, then, I mean, there's two, three trucks there at a time hauling product off the cars, and, I mean, it's right here, it's got here, they said we, we would like the plantings to be done by fall, and the sand removed around the oak tree to be removed, and they agreed to it, and now...
Yes, they did.
Right, okay. So, all right, I don't want to keep repeating myself, but 55 trees, 60 shrubs, and 200 plugs of marsh plants, you're probably talking a total of maybe $1,200 to $1,500, and what we gave back for him to do this, I think he's, should be man enough to live up to his obligation, or the cease and desist, that always wakes him up, because then the police show up and tell him to stop the operation, he's got to explain why his customers aren't getting their concrete, so...
You could do that, make another motion, well, I was just going to ask you to make another motion to put it on the land records, because that has to be voted on, so...
Okay, oh, I thought that was a question that you had to discuss with Janice.
Yeah.
Okay, but...
But, but you could go another step.
Okay, okay, then, can I do two things in one motion? The, the notice of violation on the land records and the cease and desist if this is not done by the week of Thanksgiving week? Or do you need two separate motions, or, you know?
Do you make two separate, or same?
Or they can put them together?
I actually don't know.
Okay, well, we'll do two separate motions. I'd entertain a motion that with notice of violation 88, 988 East Center Street, that a notice of violation be placed on the land records.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violation 988 East Center Street be placed in the land records.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Let's vote, Nick?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next, I'd entertain a motion that unless, with, on violation, notice of violation 988 East Center Street, that if the plantings are not completed before Thanksgiving holiday, that a cease and desist order be issued.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Wait, do you have a, do you have a...
Before we get in, I'm sorry, I just opened up the regulations about a cease and desist, okay, just to, because we don't do it that often, so I wanted to refresh my memory. First off, if you do a cease and desist, I got to send out a certified, if there's a written order, I have to send out a certified letter, and you have to hold a hearing within 10 days. So maybe we don't want to do that, that's in 14.3A, maybe we want to do 14.3B, because that is suspend or revoke a permit. Remember, we gave them a permit in June, right? So suspend or revoke a permit if it finds that the applicant has not complied with the terms, conditions, or limitations set forth in the permit. So, maybe I should get out and see what terms we put in that permit, and let's see, and then what happens, within 10 days, you still have to hold a hearing. We could do that, either way you have to hold a hearing, but I'm thinking maybe to revoke their permit...
But this, but if we revoke their permit, can they still conduct their operation? I mean, I mean, we have a situation where we issue permits, people don't obey, obey them anyhow, and so if you revoke a pa, a permit that people aren't going to comply with, you know, what does that get you, is that maybe your next step to the courts? What I'm saying...
Right, right.
Here, where ceasing operations is a, say, gains a person's attention, and if they still have to have a, hold a hearing, fine, I know that... Okay.
That we gave them, although they, they're based, they're, they're finished with their permit, except for the planting, they did everything else that we wanted them to do in that, okay, let's see if I can find it, that's the violation... This might take me a little bit, hold on. All right, I think, I've got the violation file, I don't have the application file.
Well, then, can I ask you a further question, though? If, you know, can we make a motion, as is my original motion, can we amend that, that the commission will then seek a cease and desist order? And that, so that you don't, so he has the notice, he knows we're going to do it, he doesn't, if he doesn't do it by Thanksgiving, then at the next meeting, we will seek that motion, we will, at the next meeting, then we'll seek the cease and desist.
Erin, am I wrong in, you know, notice of violation has to have corrective action? Cease and desist can be lifted at any time, dealing with the situation.
Right, or cease and correct, yeah.
Right, in other words, cease and desist means you've got to stop your operation.
Right.
You either come up with the plan, and it's approved, or you actually do what you said you would do, and it can be lifted at any time, or notice of violation requires they come before us and have to identify the violation, and then they have to have corrective action. We don't need to go notice of violation with them, because we already know they, we've already, we did re...
Okay, but a cease and desist does require its own public hearing, within 10 days, so you'd have to, you know, hold another public hearing before Thanksgiving.
But, but we're not, but we're not going to, we're not seeking the cease and desist before Thanksgiving, now, if Thanksgiving comes and goes...
Oh, I get it, I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
Okay.
I get it.
So that's, that's, so that the motion is, that, and so that the motion would be, if he doesn't do that, then we will seek a, a cease and desist order, or initiate a cease and desist order.
Right, and I...
And that would give you a hearing sometime in December.
Yes, I'm going to complicate everything by, I found the conditions of approval, I did find them, but also, they have a $5,000 bond, they posted on them.
Oh!
And that was one of the conditions of approval, was posting that, they did that. Okay, so they, the other conditions, remove the fill, they did that, catch basin, they did that, wetland planting, it goes on about what plants, let's see if it gives a date.
But it's, but it's just at this point, we know that planting is part of it.
It says David Lord to be retained and submit a report for three years, and to submit a report annually on October 1st of each year, in the three-year period, doesn't say this October, that was the intention, everyone knew it was this October, I didn't explicitly say October 2009, but that was why I wrote October 1st, okay? The bond, which they posted, what else? Okay, they didn't do the placards, the wetland placards yet, but that's not a big deal.
Okay, no, but, but I mean, yeah, okay, but we, no, before we get too far buried in the minutia here, is that you're supposed to plant, you haven't planted.
So just call his bond, tell him he's got 10 days to do it, or we're going to call his bond?
I think maybe calling the bond is nicer, because that would, because we can, by calling the bond, the plantings are $1,200, and I assume there's enough money to plant the trees, and it's done. So, I mean, okay, so, in that case, I would say we can with...
Did we make the motion, or we started to make the motion, we never made it?
Um, we've made a motion about the notice of violation on land records.
Okay, that one, that's...
That's done, yeah.
So at this point, then we can make a motion that he either gets it done, or we pull the bond.
And we're not going to wait 10 to the month, we give, we'll give, we'll split the differences, 20 days till Thanksgiving, he gets 10, and we get 10, because we need 10 to hire somebody to come in and plant the trees that he didn't plant.
Well...
That's if we drag our feet, end of the month will be here.
And then there's nothing we can do.
Right.
Unfortunately, I've, we have lived through this before with this calling the bond business, it takes a few months with the law department, it's not instant. I wish it was instant, but it's not.
So we have no, we have no bartering here, there's no way...
Well, well, there, well...
I don't know if you follow what's going on in planning and zoning, they're before planning and zoning with this, and they expected it to get approved in October, at the October meeting, they fully expected to get approved, and they did not, and there was some wrinkles, and now they're trying to iron out the wrinkles, and now they're expecting to get approved November 13th, they're hoping they get approved November 13th. So my point is, that they really shouldn't have done this, they, they should have, look, this isn't going to look well for the planning and zoning, to see how mad the Wetland Commission is, it's not going to go over well. So, this, that's your lever, is what I'm saying, there's some leverage there.
I meant, wait, I understand, if we're mad, then, if, let's use the proper terms, if the board is displeased and is looking to do a cease and desist, it doesn't help the applicant's case before planning and zoning.
Yeah.
How do we, how do we notify them of that, planning and zoning?
Oh, I give a report to Casey, to the town planner, Casey Hand, of anything that's on their agenda, I am supposed to issue a report for how it's...
Highlighted in red.
I'm sorry?
I say highlighted in red.
Yes, okay, so, so we should decide what we're going to do.
Well, okay.
The clock is ticking here, we're going to...
The clock is ticking, I, I think that... Yeah, I, I'm now more for the cease and desist, because the bond is going to take three months.
How, how quick can you get the cease and desist in the mail?
Um...
Before the 13th, which is next Tuesday night?
Well, yeah, yeah, um...
If you wrote it tomorrow, which is Thursday, you got it in the mail by tomorrow night, not that you don't have other things to do, we got it in the mail tomorrow night, he'd have it Friday, the latest Saturday morning. So, next Tuesday night, if he knows this is lingering in the air, he's going to do something, he's going to, one of them's going to call you and say, "We, we need to work this out," I would think, I know.
Okay, of course, what if he physically can't get the plants to the site, physically, they can't get them there?
Like...
They agreed to it in October.
They, they agreed to it, and the nursery said the 25th is, is about the last, Thanksgiving is the last day, so that, yeah, if we have a blizzard, yeah, if there's an earthquake, or hurricane, or downspout that really hurt, you know, wrecks the town, or wrecks, or injures the town, or prevents the people, that is one thing to take into consideration, but other than that, we're, I mean, you have planters, and you have people, landscapers out all day long, every day, so I don't really see that as an issue, so that, that's something in, in the public hearing, if that, something goes wrong, that's something he could bring up, but that would have, and then the public hearing would have to be within 10 days of, see, if you got this out, say you got this out on Friday, okay? So 10 days from Friday, he could still have the public hearing, and if there's something that's come up that would prevent it, he could present that evidence at the public hearing.
Okay, so the public hearing, would you want it on, let's say, what day would that be, let's figure out that day, if I write it, you know, he gets it, let's say he gets it Monday, let's say, issuance, it's not clear.
It's issuance day, okay, so you issue it on Friday, you got 10 days from Friday, is that correct?
Friday is the 8th, Friday is the 8th, so I got, the hearing's going to be before the 18th, so we could have the hearing, what's next, the 11th, next Wednesday, or you're saying, no, he's got to have time to prepare, so, the...
Okay, I prefer, okay, I'll let you do those, except that personally, the 11th doesn't work for me, okay? The 12th I can handle, or anything, but just personally, that doesn't work for me.
I don't think it's going to go that far.
Okay.
I think it's going to be...
Very quick, yeah, well, okay. Okay, so at this point, should I just, we can just go ahead and make the motion?
Okay, but when I issue it, I need a date, when I tell him in that letter, the hearing will be held on November...
Okay, if it has to be, if it has to be within 10 days, so, you may have to do it on Tuesday, the 9th, right, or when's the last date you can do the mess, the hearing? The last date you can do the hearing, because it has to be within 10 days.
Right, so if I get it out, it has to be by the 18th of November?
By the 18th.
Yeah.
But he's already gone to planning and zoning by then.
The 13th, he goes to planning and zoning.
Right, so...
He's going to, he's, but the letter is going to be out there, copy of that letter is going to go to planning and zoning, so he's going to have some explaining to do there.
Correct.
Okay, so, I mean, and at this point, I think we've gone, we've gone more than we need to go with this person.
Okay, so you, you want to say that you're going to put it on the land records, and you're going to do a cease and desist if the plantings are not in by Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving, yeah, so that's, so we've already got the land record...
Or...
Motion passed, so now what we're going to do is the land, is we're all going to do the cease and desist.
Yeah, but you're going to give him some time to get the plantings in, right, by, no, but...
No, he's going to get the plantings in by Thanksgiving.
Or what, I, I'm unclear, or what?
Or that, or that cease and desist, or we will seek a cease and desist order, or whether...
We will issue a cease and desist, is that okay?
You are going to initiate a cease and desist order.
Is that okay with you, Nick, that he's got to get them in by Thanksgiving, or we issue the cease and desist?
As far as I'm concerned, as far as I'm concerned, you should release the seat of notice, cease and desist right now, because that's going to wake him up, because at any time, you can walk in there and shut his operation down. If you wait till Thanksgiving, he's going to come back with cry, tears on his shoulder about, "Oh, the lands, the nurseries tell me it's too cold to plant the trees," And they're not gonna catch it, and I'm not gonna spend that kind of money and have them all die. So you need to move fast on what's gonna have the most effect. I believe the cease and desist is gonna wake him up, is gonna wake the attorney up, and it's gonna wake David Lord up. David Lord knows better than to pull this stunt, because.
I'm not so sure it was David Lord pulling a stunt.
Well, what else do we have to do, what are the, what are the?
Okay, I, I'm, I'm still looking at suspending the permit.
No, I, I, I don't, I don't think that, no, as I say, I, I think the problem with suspending the permit, he's not encouraged with the permit now, so you suspend it, so what? So that means, that means he's not gonna do it, he no longer has a, a permit that he wasn't paying attention to anyhow.
Anyhow.
Does he forfeit the bond if you suspend the permit?
Well, then after we do that, we'll go after the bond as well, I mean, maybe.
That's six months down the road.
That's, but that, you know, that may be the triple play to get it done. So I think at this point, that Mr. Kern is correct, that we should do that cease and desist order now. And that, well, you can send it out Friday, and, um, and we'll have, and if there's gonna be a meeting on the 11th, well, and I can't be there, but there's enough other, other people will do it.
Okay, I, I know you're, I've been, I'm asking for your patience here. When you issue a cease and desist, he has to be maintaining a bad condition.
He is maintaining a bad condition, he's not painting the place, the place, I mean, we put that condition in, excuse me, I, I, I'm getting a little. We put that condition because we're here to protect wetlands, if he did, if he's.
Right, but if you.
If he's not planting, he's not maintaining the wetland commission, the wetland conditions that we agreed to. Because if he doesn't need, you know, and so, you know, maybe that'd be a good argument for his attorney to make. But I think, you know, it gets very close, here's, here's the, here, here is the permit, here's what the terms and conditions are. You're not, you're violating the terms, a commission, of, of terms and conditions, and our remedy, and one of our remedies is cease and desist. Am I right?
Right, and how he fixes it, he corrects such facility or condition, so he would correct it by planting the plant.
Yeah, that's, that's all he's gotta do, you know, he puts the, I mean, he sees the thing, he plants them in.
Okay, alright.
Then, then he's fine.
He just needs to be reminded, he sat here and told us what a good citizen he is, he wants to better the area, you know, he wants to be a good whatever, but. It's a wake-up call, and I think that's the only leverage we have to make it work.
All right, so how you gonna word it, let's word this.
We're gonna, I'm gonna, I'd like to entertain a motion, uh, that with violation, uh, see. 988 East Center Street, um, that the environmental planner will issue a cease and desist order on Friday, which is, what, the 9th?
8th.
The 8th. Uh, informing him that he will either complete the, uh, informing him that he has to until Thanksgiving to complete the plantings. Okay, we, we good on that?
To Thanksgiving to install the plant.
Yeah, will be installed, complete.
Put the planting plan.
Will be, the, okay, the planting plan will be complete.
Will be complete, by Thanksgiving, the planting plan.
Right.
By Thanksgiving, the planting plan will be complete.
Okay.
Okay, so within 10 calendar days, we gotta hold a hearing, so in that letter, I gotta put when the hearing is.
Okay, and you can, so, within, that's interesting, because that means you could do, have a hearing the next day, I suppose.
Right, but our law department says you gotta give them a few days to get ready for the hearing.
Okay, so the, then.
Have them contact this office.
Okay.
To schedule a meeting, a hearing.
Well, I don't, I'll either do that, or we can have the schedule, and he's got to just, he's got up here, and we got up here. So what is it, 10, it's 10 and 8, 8, it would be the 18th, I don't know when the 18th.
Monday, the 18th.
Monday, the 18th, that's fine with me.
I, I didn't get that.
I meant, Monday, the 18th, I think is.
November 18th.
November 18th would be the 10 day.
Hearing meeting.
Is that a Monday?
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, we can eat, you know.
Monday, so to 6, 7, 8, so that's 8, Friday's the 8th.
Still gives him seven days to get a plant.
Within 10 days. How about, how about I do it tomorrow?
It's better if you have time, early the better.
Early is better, if you can, yeah.
So if I get it out, then we could have it, but no, we could have it, you don't want on a Friday, it'd have to be that Thursday. This is tough.
You gotta send it, you gotta send out a return receipt, right?
Right, right, um, I can also hand deliver it, I mean, I've done that, but 7, so you have to have it by this, within 10 days, so. By the 17th, which is a Sunday. This is not working out, unless I issue it on.
No, if you issue it.
Monday's Veterans Day, we're closed.
We're not.
Yeah, but the mail is, I think.
They'll send it Friday, the 8th, and 10 days later is the 18th.
Yeah, because we have to do it within 10 days.
You could do it before that.
So we could have it, we could have the meeting on Friday, what's it, 8 and?
Within 10 days.
Seven, yeah, within, it's gotta be within 10 days, we don't have to stretch it out to 10 days. So, if you send it out to them tomorrow, then, and, which would be nicer, but then Friday, we can have a public hearing.
Okay, so you want the 18th, Monday, the 18th, here, in this, if we can get this room.
Monday, 18th fair, or whatever room.
Okay, Monday, the 18th, all right.
Okay, now, Debbie, is there enough, you got enough for a motion?
Okay, all right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violation 988 East Center Street, um, the envi- environmental planner will issue a cease and desist order. So that the, if the plantings are not complete by Thanksgiving, um, she will issue the cease and desist order on November 8th, 2019.
No, no, that's not clear enough.
No, you're gonna.
What do you want, then?
Um, the environmental planner to issue a cease and desist order, um, so that, because the plantings have not been planted, and.
Because the planting plan has not been completed?
Because, yeah, because of failure to complete, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, condition, um, maintaining a condition. Maintaining a condition, because he's failed, because the applicant has failed to install the planting plan, we are issuing a cease and desist order.
On the.
For failure, oh.
We're, we're gonna issue a cease and disorder, cease and desist order on November 10th, we will.
8.
November 8th, hold a public hearing on.
November 18th.
And if the condition has not been done, uh, and if the condition hasn't been corrected by November 25th, or, or, I'm sorry, by Thanksgiving. Then a cease and desist order will take effect.
No, but you're issuing the cease and desist on Friday, you've told me I'm supposed to issue.
Okay, so does he have to stop on, okay, so then he's gonna have the hearing, right? And so, actually, do we even need the, do we even need the Thanksgiving then?
You're issuing the notice of cease and desist because he's, he hasn't responded to your calls, or your letters or requests, calls or requests. He hasn't called or answered, the, the letter is because he has not responded, and, all right, that's the first.
Well, eventually, no, they did yesterday respond and send a fax, or I think it was Friday, they sent a fax saying, here's our receipt, we bought the plantings, they're going in in the spring, period.
No, no, you don't buy plants in the fall, and then you plant them in the spring, that's all crap. There's two parts to this, you're, he's not responding, and that's not a response, telling you, I bought the plants now, and I'm gonna plant them in the spring, wrong answer. And the second thing is, it's, the only thing he has in this world is his word. He gave us his word, they'd be done by the end of fall, and he, and he's nigg'd on his part of the deal. So, we're gonna call the bond, here's your cease and desist letter, please contact us to resolve this issue as soon as possible. And then send a CC to Casey, and have her read it in the minutes at the planning and zoning meeting, and let's hope that they realize what this guy's doing, and then everything comes to screaming off. Yes or no, you throw your ace card in, you got nothing to lose.
Okay, could you say that again, what I'm supposed to, what the, or, I'm a little confused on the motion, same with the motions.
Okay, actually, I like the.
You got one question, when's the cease and desist order take effect?
Soon as he gets it.
So he's closed, when it's soon as he gets the cease and desist order.
I, I can be, yes.
Well, until he puts the plants in, if he, if the next day.
That's two different things.
Right.
If he gets the letter and he's closed, or does it take effect if he doesn't put the plants in by Thanksgiving? Which are you going for? Because if you're closing down on Friday, and you're gonna wait 10 days out of business, we're being a little unreasonable with that.
Well, that's what I said before, you can have the police squad here and shut them down.
Why, why can't you just go threaten him with the cease and desist order, tell him we're gonna slap this on you next week? She can call him tomorrow, and tell him we're gonna send this to you Friday, and warn him it's gonna happen. And then you can call a special meeting and have it take place at that point.
Because the act of putting the sand from the train cars into the trucks is not a violation of our wetlands, it's that part, we can't stop that part.
You give him a cease and desist order, you've closed him.
I don't think we can stop that part.
What's the cease and desist order do?
It's bad PR, it's definitely bad PR, I, I'm sorry, I'm not sure we can stop him from, he's in violation right now. He's not supposed to be putting the sand into those trucks right now, he's been in zoning violation for five years. But, but that act is not really hurting the wetlands, putting the sand in the trucks isn't hurting the wetlands. It's not like he's excavating the wetlands or something where I can say, stop. He's not cutting trees in, in a floodplain forest where I can say cease.
But he hasn't completed the planting plan that he agreed to.
Okay, then, then if I hear you, if he can't do, say, we're gonna assume that what you say is true. Okay, that turns out to be the case, then, in this case, the bond is our own remedy, then.
And, and the land records, and.
Okay, so land records, we're already, we're already doing the land records, and the land records is good, because if he's looking for any financing or anything like that, he's gonna have that to complete with. Okay, and lenders don't lend, or they don't close loans when they have things like that outstanding. Then closing, then, then we can, then, okay, it may take three months to plan and get the bond, okay? That may, but he's not gonna plant it, but if he's not gonna plant it, he's telling you he's not gonna plant anywhere, so we're, no, we're soft. The only thing is, in the spring, we'll have the bond, we'll have the $5,000, so we can take the corrective action ourselves. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay, so I think maybe, so I think that, as you explain further, that the cease and desist may not be the property, proper remedy. But certainly, pulling the bond would be, is that true?
Why, because if he buys the plants, he's out $5,000, if we take his $5,000, he's out $5,000, it's the same, it's the same.
But he gets.
But the thing is, but, no, but the $5,000 in the treasury of the town of Wallingford, we can get those, we'll just go plant it ourselves. You wanna do it, you don't wanna do it, we'll do it, either way.
I don't wanna jump ship here, but in your, uh, environmental report here.
Yeah.
You talk about, uh, uh, recent site work drainage for the town of Wallingford, uh, I'm going back here, oh. May wish to vote to have the law department place a notice of violation on the land records now, or may wish to wait until December 4th, meaning to act. At this time, there may be a decision rendering by the planning and zoning, which impacts certain water quality concerns below. And you talked about the concerns about going through the Telcon property versus the Warren Williams property. Should the planning and zoning not act to approve the proposed special permit site plan at its November 13 meeting, it's suggested that the inland wetlands order correction of the untreated runoff leaving this active site as in its December 4th meeting. So you've already, you're already planned, in your environmental report, you're already headed towards, what are we gonna do, what's the next step we're gonna do? So I mean, we're just speeding up the show here a little bit, no, or you don't even wanna use your words here.
That last sentence was, if the planning zone doesn't approve it, they might not, they're, they're on the fence, they might not approve this. If they don't, his water is not getting treated, the runoff from there is not getting treated. If they do approve it, he'll put in the detention facility and it'll treat it, and it'll be good thing.
Right, right now, it's not being treated, is it?
Or, no, it's not, and, but, but if we suspend or revoke his permit, we can say, it says, you have to put in there what he can do to correct it. You can say, we've suspended it, you can get your permit back, all you gotta do is plant those plants by Thanksgiving, and he gets his permit back.
Well, you're, you're in our, our environmental planner, you're our staff person, you, you need to decide what's gonna have the most impact. You deal with him, you've dealt with him, you know what he's gonna fold for and what he's not, it's obvious, everything up to now, he doesn't care.
I don't think he's gonna care either way.
And pull the permit, and put the wheels in motion to pull the bond, do both, that's all.
Do both.
Do both, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, we've already got, we're asking for the land records, then we're gonna pull the permit, and then we wanna pull the bond, and we're gonna stop planning and zoning. Sound fair?
Just run it by Janet to see if she thinks we're on the right track, we're not playing hard ass, we're just, we're trying to get this resolved.
Okay, so you want, you're gonna make a motion to do all those things?
Okay, so I think the first motion is that the permit be pulled.
Well, do you wanna suspend it or revoke it?
Which makes him come back.
Which, yeah, which has the biggest impact.
Revoke.
Does that mean he has to come back?
Then he has to resubmit it all, oh, yeah.
Right.
So messed up, I'm sorry, if you revoke his permit, he can't have his, he can't be heard by planning and zoning Tuesday, Wednesday night.
Isn't that great?
Tough luck.
I bet Dennis will call you then.
I know, I, I.
I mean, I mean, you've got, you understand, okay, it's every understand, here's a person, agreed to do something, okay?
Right, I'm just.
I mean, and, and a way I do happen to look at things, permits are like contracts, we're gonna let you do this, you're gonna do that, okay? That's the exchange of promises, he's not living up to it. If it's just a simple contract matter, he would be in breach, we'd be seeking remedies for breach of contract. So now the things we're thinking, well, now what our mandate is here, we can revoke his permit, right? We will call his bond, we've already agreed to put the matter on the land records. And if he doesn't do it, then, you know, we may end up in court with this person. And, and Janet may say, you know what, you can do a cease and desist of the operation. And the argument for that would be, that he is continuing his operation in violation of a permit. He needed that permit to do that operation.
All right, let me, let me read from the regs, though, it says, prior to revoking any permit, the commission shall issue a notice and by certified mail, setting forth the fax, and within 10 calendars, have a hearing.
Fine.
Okay, do it.
And do that, yeah.
Okay, can we have a?
The 8th and 18th together.
Okay, so we're just gonna have, prior to revoke, okay, so the motion's gonna be, okay, or I'd like to entertain a motion to revoke the permit at 988, uh, East Center Street.
Okay.
Can I have a motion now?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we revoke the permit, uh. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we revoke the permit at 988 East Center Street, and then also call the bond?
Oh no, we'll do the call of the bond separately.
Okay.
Okay, um, okay, so, do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, do we have further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, call for a vote?
Yes.
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 Now, next, entertain a motion to call the bond on, on 988 East Center Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to call the bond on 988 East Center Street.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, we, the reason we're pulling the bond is to do remediation for something he obligated himself to, to repair and restore the quality of the water in the wetland areas, which he's not doing. Because you, you can't revoke his permit and keep his bond both. Because if you revoke his permit, then really there's no reason to keep his bond. But we're gonna keep his bond because that part of the agreement was not fulfilled. That's why we're gonna pull the bond.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
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 Yes. So that's, we've done everything we have to do on that. Oh no, do we also have to-
We have to have a hearing on that now?
No, okay, well, she'll schedule, we know we're gonna have a public hearing, we'll get a notice of that. Do we have to vote to keep the violation in effect?
You did that.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay, you did that, all right. I seen the audience, two people that is-
Earlier violations.
They're here for violations, okay. Next item is notice of violation, 52 Hanover Street, Quinnipiac River.
We skipped 530, 530 Church Street.
I'm sorry, notice of violation, A16 dash 2.1, 530 Church Street, Joseph Maneri. Listen here.
That's a, that's a good news story. That's a good news story, he's good. He's good, he's pulled out his silt fence, the only thing left he has to do is put up his placards, but that's not a violation, I mean, he just needs to finish and put his placards up, so, that's, we can skip that till next time. He's just got his, I gave him his placards, he's just gotta put them up.
Okay, but we need a motion on the violation anyhow. Continue it?
I, I just would skip it till next time, actually.
Skip it, okay.
I, I don't see the need, same with the next one, I'd skip that one.
Okay.
It's good.
12 via, 12 we've already dealt with.
Already done that, so now we're on-
Okay, now, notice of violation, 1245 Old Colony Road, Jersey Patel. Yeah, sit down, you know, sit down and you can-
Good evening everybody.
Identify yourself and if you can-
Good evening everybody, I am Jersey Patel. I'm the owner of the property.
And my name is Greg Robarzak, and I'm the general manager of the, Greg Robarzak, and I'm the general manager of the property. Or the, or the business.
Okay, um, did you want to let them go first, or did you have any comments you would like to make, and then we'll ask, Miss O'Hare?
Uh, yes, why don't I go set the stage a little bit? All right, so, in the one environmental, the environmental planners report went out Friday afternoon in the second packet. Some of you got that second packet, some of you didn't, but I handed out copies tonight of two environmental reports. One was written November 1st, went out in Friday's packet, the other was written tonight. It should say November 6th at the top, it doesn't, it says November 1st at the top, could you make that correction? It says November 1st at the, the top as well, and it talks about the site visit today. All right, so you got the two reports. Basically, I've been working with the owner on this violation steadily, you know, it's a slow process. Back in July, he was ordered, the commission ordered him to get a survey, certain survey information done, very explicit what they wanted done, what the commission wanted done. They wanted to do a site visit, but they couldn't do, they felt they couldn't do a site visit until they had the survey information and the flagging. They wanted the FEMA boundary flagged, they wanted the property on the, the property line on the south flagged, they wanted the Upland Review Area flagged, and so that when the commission went out there, they could see these flags and get a sense of the extent of the violation, the depth of the fill, where we were in time and space. Well, here we are now, November 6th, there, I went out there today, there is no flagging whatsoever, that's the bad news, but the good news, we got two good newses. One is their surveyor, Bob Amatea, did do some preliminary survey, I have, I have, he didn't, we didn't have enough copies for everybody, but I will bring some maps here, I have two copies I can pass around of all the survey he's done, so far. He's not done, but he's done a bit of survey. Um, the other piece of good news is Mr. Patel is, wants to cooperate, and in the last few days, he's removed 28 truckloads of fill, so he's on his way, he's on his way. He wants to know, and he's here tonight, because he really, and he tried to work with me today, he really wants to understand what part of this fill can stay, what part of this fill do I have to get out of here? And what else does he have to do? So, it, it's a complicated site, he has also got zoning violations. As you know, the town planner is the flood manager for the town, so she's gonna be dealing with the FEMA violations, the material in the floodplain, the material, if there is any, in the floodway, she's gotta address that too. As you might remember, there was an approval of a plan back in 2004 with Andy Burnham on this site, and then further improvements in 2007, they came before, Andy Burnham, previous owner, came before the Wetland Commission, got approval to improve this industrial property. He got a wetland approval, he was doing work within the Upland Review Area, a little bit, not a lot, a little bit of work, and he got a bigger approval from the zoning folks. Well, he half, half executed that, and then he stopped, he didn't see it through. One of the questions here is, is how much of the, in other words, one of the questions, what happened in 2017, FEMA, the federal government changed their law about the floodplain regulations, and it said that if you, you can no longer fill the floodplain unless you give us compensatory flood storage. Before then, we were approving filling in the floodplain, but then everything changed. And I'm glad, we've had a bunch of applications, like 76 South Turnpike Road, they had to give us compensatory flood, flood storage, they dug out this huge basin. Developers will do that. In this case, there's still the question in front of us, in front of the owner, well, what do I have to take out? Am I gonna be allowed to keep this? Can I keep at least what Andy could keep, Mr. Burnham could fill, even though it was in the floodplain, that was back before the law changed, so can we keep that? So this is what we're, we're talking about. Um, I have a lot of photographs, if you wanna see the condition of the site, as far as going out there, setting a special meeting and go out walking, it would help you understand what we're talking about, but, again, there's no flagging yet, so it was a little, it was hard to know where we were standing, where these lines were, even though Mr. Amatea was there with his maps, trying to show us where the lines were, so.
Okay, so, but just to ask the real quick question. If he got, if he does a flagging, then the commission can go out, see what's gonna, and see what needs to be done, and make a determin, they can make a determination for him to do that, because I'm having trouble understanding, say, well, you know, for me to do this, and me say, well, do this and do that and do this, when I'm not really sure, where, we don't even have a flagged map. So I'm looking for some direction on what direction we should take.
If I may, uh, this-
Go ahead.
There was different story when I was here yesterday with Mr. Amatea and Mr. Aaron said, it's, it's not about it, the thing is-
Okay, one, one at a time, okay? Oh yeah, please, oh, you have identified yourself.
Thanks, man.
So, one person at a time, go ahead.
And Aaron said there is no need to be for the commission there to look at it, that was your statement yesterday, with Mr. Amatea.
You can come over, it's, it's not a-
But you guys can-
I think that you do-
You're welcome anytime.
Wait, 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 let him, he's talking first, then we'll-
But you guys welcome anytime to come and visit the site. So I kinda mixed up, because yesterday was different story, today is different story, so, that's my point.
Okay.
I can say, I bring 82 trucks, the new fill, I didn't know I cannot do it, and then I said I can remove everything, I can take everything back. That's why I talked with a ma'am, and, and then I said to her today, even whatever I have to do, then I will do, right? If I have to move, uh, whatever, 82 trucks, I will move 82 trucks. And then, whatever the Andy did before, so why I have to do that, you know? If you let him do that 14 years ago, so why I have to move whatever he did 14 years ago? So when you guys was 14 years ago, not controlling Andy, 14 years ago, I can't, whatever I did right now, I said, I move everything, I did already have the, have the work. But whatever Andy did, why have to, you, you guys let him do it, so why I have to pay for it and then move everything? He did, he have a picks there, you have everything there, and then, you know, I clean the place only.
Okay. Well, the only question, the only question, okay, my question, and before you pass them out, if they're not really, are these things ready that we could, that the commission go out and do a site visit? Because I think you've got some, you've got some complicated issues, and, and you are certainly advocating not just having to spend any more money than you want, than is necessary. And it's not our job, or our intent, we just make people spend money because we don't like them or something like that, that's not the question, that's not the case at all. We want, whatever money is spent, whatever work is done, has got to, it's just to make the wetlands in good condition.
Yeah, of, I'm, I'm sorry, of course I did the mistake, you know, I didn't know I cannot put the dirt there, you know, I did that-
Okay.
And I said I can move this thing back. Whatever I did, I said, I can move everything back, and then-
We don't, we don't make the decisions here, your engineer will tell you what needs to stay and what needs to go. Mr. Amatea should be able to tell you, we're, we're not here to tell you, you need to take 10 truckloads out or 20 truckloads. Your engineer is gonna tell you on paper what needs to be pulled back, what can stay. He knows the regulations, he knows how FEMA has changed their regulations. Now, I live on the river too, and hopefully FEMA's not gonna come to me and tell me I have to take my fill back, because I hope I'm not intruding on what they say. So, you know, when the federal government says something, everybody acts to the federal government.
Of course.
Mr. Matea knows what you should be here, you shouldn't even be here tonight, as far as I'm concerned, Mr. Amatea should be sitting there telling us what he's gonna do for you as far as where the lines and the boundaries are. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
The thing is, you know, whatever I did there, only I cleaned up the place there, seriously, you know, if, I can give you the, like, the, the map of the Google, and then you can see what was there, was accepting tanks and everything-
Yeah.
And, and there was stamps and everything, I didn't do nothing bad there to be punished like this, you know?
Well, okay, you at least think you didn't do, but you might have, there, but we've, you know, we got an issue here and we've gotta resolve it. So what I'm saying, I guess the question is that when can, this is Mr., what's his name?
Amatea.
When can Mr. Amatea get the map? When he gets the map, when can we take our, when can we take our walk, our site visit?
Well, he, these are his maps. The, Mr. Chairman Vitale was adamant that there be flagging, so that when we were standing there, we would know where that 50-foot line, the Upland Review Area line was.
Okay, so, at this particular point, it's not flagged, so we can't set a meeting?
Unless you wanna just sort of estimate where the line is.
No, 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 because we're gonna, no, I mean, Chairman Vitale, when he wants it done this way, he's far more experienced than I am, and I defer to his judgment. If he says it's gotta be flagged, it's got to be flagged.
I'm not trying to cut you off, Aaron, but why are they here tonight? If the place isn't flagged for us to see, and, and you talked about the FEMA, I mean, it's, all these things add up to, they ought to have a print for us to go by and we can schedule a meeting.
I know, okay, as administrator, I know what I would want, what fill I would want him to move, remove, but, but typically how Chairman Vitale runs it is that the commission goes out and, and looks at the flags and decides what the commission wants him to remove, which might be a compromise, you know? So, so for instance, Andy Burnham built a road that he wasn't approved for in our Upland Review Area, he built a road, but he built it in 2007, I think, maybe? I'd have to check exactly. So, the question, what I'm struggling with now is, do I make Mr. Patel, or does the commission ask Mr. Patel to take that road out that has, it's a violation? Nobody gave anybody permission to build that road in that Upland Review Area. Or do we say, well, it's not his fault, it's not Mr. Patel's fault? You know, that's something the commission has to wrestle with.
That's a legal issue, that's not a, our-
It's a legal, yeah.
A legal issue with Janice. Janice would have to make that decision. What about the green belt? Is there a green belt out there?
Or, wait, but following through on that, Nick, someone could say, well, okay, maybe he should come in with a per, a, a application to keep that road. If you wanna let him keep his road, come in with a application to let him keep that.
Ma'am, I don't need this road. I, I don't need this, I don't, I have to go there on the back, I don't need this road.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we're-
I'm sorry.
No, 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 I, I would just say, we're hearing things, you wanna do this, but what we have right now is confused, because we don't have a map, and we've got further confusion, so it doesn't seem that we can take any action on this situation tonight, other than, than continue to consider the violation. Okay, and yes, you're in violation, but yes, we do recognize you're trying to take some steps to correct it, and the things that you really have to do, or, it's have it, you know, to really finish this thing off and say, okay, violation's lifted, go on about your business, we're not there yet, we may not be there for a while, but if you use an engineer, what you're doing, uh, they are very good at coming up with situations that work for everybody, and which I'm sure your engineers should be able to do for you. So at this point, so I think the only thing we have to do is just continue with violation, and he's done. I mean, and just continue violation, and then we're done with the matter for tonight, is that right?
I need to check something.
I have, can I have one question? Because in this point, I don't know what I have to do, if I have to-
But that's exactly the point we're making to you.
We want you to stop, we don't want you to take another load out of the pit down there, we don't want you to do anything until Mr. Amatea, she gives you a print showing you what you need to work on.
Right.
We can't tell you because we don't have the, the geographic layout out there. You have to talk with him and tell him what you wanna do or what needs to be done.
That's what I'd like to know, you know, because-
I wouldn't take anything else out until you talk to him.
So that part, okay, that's subtle.
Yeah.
I guess I'm also looking for, I'm referring to my environmental planners report that went out Friday, or, yeah, Friday. I'm looking for some direction as to how much old miscellaneous debris and objects the commission would want taken off this property that's in wetlands.
Okay, and I can give you a very firm answer to that, I have no idea, because I haven't seen the plant, I've gone, we haven't done the tour, so that, we can't, so at this point, we can't give you any direction.
Correct, I meant in, in general, conceptually, if somebody, if Mr. Burnham put it there 20 years ago, do we want it out, or is it?
That, I don't, I don't know, we haven't seen, I mean, when I, we haven't seen the site, we haven't, you know, we haven't listened to his engineer, we haven't listened, and he, you have not finished your conversations, whatever it is, with your engineers, so we're not really sure that what you wanna hold on to, we're not really sure what you need to be done, so I mean, at this point, we, we just don't have any information to proceed further, other than to say, to continue the notice of violation, and for you to continue working with your engineer, and when you got- working with your engineer. And when you got a plan or something like that, let us come up and, and the place is flagged, then we can go out and look at it.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I mean, it starts, I mean, that's all we can do. I can't, I can't come up with any other solution.
All right. So then I would suggest that you direct the owner to install silt fencing where things are eroding. Per my, what I said today, there's erosion happening today. I, I, we discussed it, I discussed it with him in the field, on the side of the road, and to correct the erosion with silt fence or hay bales. He's going to tip the road. It's now going toward the river. He's going to tip it a little bit so the water doesn't go, the erosion goes the other way. There's photographs I've left up there of this erosion situation. So that, he agreed to do. He understands erosion, he can do that. I'd like you to direct him to, to proceed with the erosion controls. I'd also like you to direct him to put flagging out there for the wetland commission so we can walk out there. We need flags. Mr. Amate was arguing it's going to, they both, it's going to cost money, but we need flags, else you'll never know where you are walking around.
Well, the, okay.
Well, that's one of the reasons why I want him to stop, because I don't want him to disturb anything else or open up a bag of worms out there. We get a hard rain or we get a minor flooding issue down there and everything washes away because it's been disturbed. So let's leave the stability that's there, there, until it's flagged and we can get out there and then we can go from there. But I think the engineer should give him flagging and you should give him advice on what FEMA says, uh, what the limits of boundaries are now as far as, uh, fill work. Those are the two things that we need from, uh, Amatea.
Okay, and, and, and what that means, that last one, you know what that means? I mean, sitting down with me and the town, the flood manager, who is the town planner, sitting down and say, okay, what does this mean? What, what are we going to do here? We'll have to have, so if you could put in that, the motion or the direction, you're going to direct, under the notice of violation, this is a violation matter, you're going to direct to put flags in? You're going to do, direct for his engineer to have a meeting with the town planner and the town, and the environmental planner?
Yeah, wetland flagging is what we want.
What, what, wetland flags and, and fifty-foot boundary, you know, the upland review area flag, yeah, yeah, yeah?
You getting all this stuff?
If I, can I excuse for a second? Because when we discussed all those maps yesterday, he marked every single boundaries where the flood plan is.
Yes, he put it on the paper.
On the map?
They want it in the field.
I understand that, but you said yesterday that you don't need any commission to walk through this because you understand what it is. That was your exact, you words, what you said.
Okay.
Now, everything's changed.
Well, okay, there, I can explain that to you. Environmental planner, she makes your recommendation, she goes out there, we rely on our expertise. On the other hand, the commission can say, okay, well, this is fine, but you need to do this or you need to do that. Now, in listening to her, she's come up with things that are, seem to be at least common sense or reasonable, and that's, that's going to be part of it. Okay, this, but, and then, so I'm trying to explain to you, this is going to be a long process. Okay, you, you kind of walked into something and you find yourself a little bit blindsided. And, uh, but the deal is, you work with us, you work with your engineers, you work with her, we come up with a solution that works, and we're trying to get up and we're not here to make you spend money. We're here to make you do things, you know, you know, we don't, you want to spend, we don't, you want to spend a dime more or dime less than what it takes to get the situation resolved. Are you, we, is there enough so that Debbie can read her motion?
Yes, you should, uh, well, yes, I guess Debbie might have the motion, um, oh, I had.
Motion's going to be part of continuing the notice of violation.
I did have another idea.
Okay.
The other idea was.
You know, we're shooting ideas. I, I mean, I think that we.
The idea was to set up a sidewalk when Mr. Vitale.
But that's, that's, I mean, that'll be downstream, that'll be next week. I mean, there, he's, I mean, he's not going to have this map and everything done before the next meeting, is he?
Realistically, yeah.
Realistically, no. So I mean, so the thing is, that's, that I think is going to be business for, uh, that's going to be business for next month, and now, and the, Mr. Vitale can take care of that.
I was just hoping people could see it before it's under six inches of snow, you know?
Well, we'll get the snow tomorrow night. So.
Debbie, are you ready to give a motion?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so now I'll entertain a motion, uh, continuing the viol, the violation on twelve forty-five Old Colony Road.
I mean, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the notice of violation on twelve forty-five Old Colony Road and Quinbyak River remain in effect and direct the owner to install silt fills, silt fencing where erosion is occurring, um, to, to install, um, flagging for the wetlands and to, three, have, schedule a meeting, um, with his engineer, with the town planner and the environmental planner.
Is that complete?
And, yes, could I just, you said flagging for the wetlands. Could you say flagging for the wetland jurisdictional area?
Flagging for, um, the wetland jurisdictional areas.
And I'd rather see hay bales. It's not as expensive and, uh, they're more versatile as far as different areas that need to, instead of just running, uh, two thousand dollars worth of said fence, let's have them do hay bales in the areas that are started with erosion. Will that work?
Or silt, you want to make it optional, silt fence or hay bales?
Right, give it the option, it's up to them, but the hay bales work the same as the said fence, and it's a lot cheaper.
No.
Okay.
See what I said?
Yes.
Okay.
I already secure everything very nicely there. There's nothing going to the river, everything I did very nicely. There's nothing going to the river. We have put a special fence right now. I put the dirt there and then I put even grass, put a hay there. So it's nothing going to the river, you know, everything is secure very fast.
Just don't take any more out.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to put it?
We've heard, we've heard the motion, and we've got the, so, and he's got the option on the silt fence or the hay bales or, um.
Do you want a timeframe on each of those items so we get it done? Give a timeframe within?
Well, it's certainly, he's going, he's going to be, yeah, this should be, how long does it take to do that? Two weeks enough?
Oh, yeah, two weeks for the, for the silt fence, install flags? I don't know, what do you want to give him for that? Two weeks, three weeks?
No.
You know, you know, we're, we're, no, you know what, I think we're complicating the motion. He's going to do it, and it's got to be done, certainly it's got to be done before the next meeting.
Yeah, I would say the hay bales, the said fence and hay bales before December second's meeting, and the flagging of the wetlands as, uh, as soon as the engineer can do it. Because you, you, he doesn't have any control over the engineer, get him out there, or the engineer's, uh, field crew that's going to flag it. So it may be January before week or the middle of December before we can go out there and see it. So we've got to give him a buffer, a, a, more of a timeframe for those flagging, but I think a month is enough time to put, uh, said fence or hay bales where needed on the site. And you can check that when you go by, Aaron, for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Sure.
Because I don't know, because everything is so, like you even worked today, uh, on the road, I said to you, I have to put the, the dirt more so that water go there. So which place I have to put a hay bales? Because really nothing is going to the river, everything is so secure nicely there. I don't know what I, what I have to, what I have to.
Well, that's, okay, those are issues that you work out with her, you know, we, we can't do it, you know, and she can tell you what to do.
Very nicely there.
Okay.
I would like to, uh.
But I mean.
If you can come over here and then see everything there, because really it's not.
Well, we're not going to come over.
For something small, it's just so much things going on here.
Wherever you think the water is going to wash away, the berm that you made, you made a little berm.
You, my word, is nothing going to the river.
Yeah, but one good rainstorm, you don't want to come back and say, geez, you know, we thought we were fine, and now we've, we've got a problem. So that's why we do these things, okay?
This is a, is a different level. It's not going to go there.
I think.
We flooded, maybe, yes.
Okay, but the point is, first of all, I can't either agree or disagree with you as whether it's good or bad because I haven't seen the property. So that's why we work.
I would like, what?
So that's why, that's why we're directing you. You will work with the environmental planner because she's the one who can go out there and see what you've done or what you got to do.
Because really, I did nothing much there and.
Okay, and, okay, and so, and so what you may think you may or may not have done, it's got to really line up with what she wants you to do. And that's part of working with, that's part of being a proper owner where there's.
Yes, I should come over here, get a permit.
But at this.
I would like to, if you can guys come over and see what I did there.
Well, as I say, we'll be there, okay?
Please.
We'll be there.
Mr. Pileman, just.
No.
No? All right.
Which, because it's not, we don't know the amount of work he has to do.
All right. Everything depends on Amatea. That's what it sounds like to me.
Well, I get the impression that Mr. Amate wasn't getting paid to flag.
We're not here about financial pluses and minuses. Our job is to protect the wetlands. So these gentlemen have to work that out with Mr. Amatea.
Yes.
All right?
Absolutely.
Do you have time to stop by and instruct this owner that's doing the earth moving, what needs to have hay bales or said fence? Would that be sometime this week, you could meet with him and show him?
Yes.
He's confused about where the hay bales would go. You've done enough of them, you know where they need to be planted or with stakes, you know?
Yes, yes, if I can do that.
Any berms or whatever?
Yep.
Yes?
Yep, 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 I'll do that.
Yes.
So we have the motion made.
Yes.
Now, do we have a second on the, wait, I'm saying we have the motion made. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, I think we've had.
Well, any discussion?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Okay, notice of violation, eleven oh three Old Colony Road.
All right, this, um, this went out in Friday afternoon's packet. I, this meeting in the environmental planners report. Um, I also have pictures, I went out there today. They're not in some, they're not quite there yet. They, they just haven't put back that, they haven't, I've asked them about five times to do the following thing, to install a long skinny, sort of like a low storm basin in the back. It was Chairman Vitale's idea when he was out there. He felt that with all the paving and improvements out there, that they were going to need some more water storage area. So he directed them to put in a, a low basin behind their main building, about twenty feet long and maybe ten feet wide. That has not happened. Um, then the other thing is, they've done most of the other work, I'll show you the pictures. They said they put in grass seed, but it didn't grow. If they did, if they put it in, it didn't grow at all. So I'm going to ask them to put in straw mulch where the grass seed should have gone, and that's along all the wetland and stream and pond work they did. It just didn't grow. Okay, I'm going to bring up the pictures.
Grass field to grow.
I looked, I looked through to the, uh, fence Sunday, and it actually looks like the back of the garage is higher than it was when we had the site investigation here. I don't know if it's just.
It might be. It might be higher.
I, I see, uh, okay, you're talking, I'm looking at your picture, a new ditch, it looks more like random diggings in a ditch. I mean, I mean, I don't, it's.
At one time, there was a tank there and they removed the tank and they were filled in the hole.
Okay.
Okay, that, it just wasn't there last, the time before when I was there.
Right, they've taken out since though. They worked there last Saturday or Sunday. They were there most of the day, hanging around with the back hole.
This place is, uh, I mean, looking from your pictures, it looks like it's a property in very poor condition. Uh, I guess maybe bottom line question, are these people, are these people working with you in good faith?
They go in fits and starts. They, they seem real good, they do some things, and then they kind of disappear.
Okay, because with the very long conversation we had earlier with another applicant failing to perform, uh, are they in that situation or are they better than that?
Um, well, as I say in my last sentence of the environmental, well, two last sentences, to put an NOV, the NOV on the land records was one idea. I mean, you never know.
I mean, are we, are, are, okay, I guess the real question is, you know, we can just simply continue the notice of violation, all right? And if that's all you need, fine, that's what we'll do. Uh, but, uh, do we need something, are we ready for something more than, uh, placing it on the land record?
Oh, I definitely want straw mulch because no grass.
No, you shouldn't ask that question.
It's going to be a mess over the winter. It's going to be a mess.
Okay, so the question is, I, so I, I, the way I asked the question, maybe didn't quite grasp it. Are we ready for the point where we do something like putting a notice on the viol, putting?
Yeah.
A copy of the record on the land? Ready for that?
Yes.
Okay, then we, and that's probably as far as we can, need to go or can go tonight. So at that point, what I propose to do is put, ask for a motion to continue the violation, notice of violation, and to put the notice on the land records.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, may I have a, a motion with respect to, let's see, twelve forty, uh, eleven oh three Old Colony Road?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on eleven oh three Old Colony Road, that the, uh, notice of violation is to be continued and to place the notice on the land records.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for vote, Nick?
Yes.
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 Yes. Let's see. Set, uh, one more, um. Yeah, let's see, eight oh one North Colony Road and six, uh, Beaumont Row, Patens Brook. Anything new on that?
They were supposed to install plantings in October. I haven't heard from them. I'm sorry, I didn't connect with them, so I don't know if they did.
They were there last, uh.
Oh.
Saturday or Sunday, most of the day.
Oh, excellent.
With plantings and, uh, trucks. They were doing something, I'm not sure what it was, but they were there.
Oh, excellent, good.
It was a firm on in Massachusetts, because I noticed the license plate was out of state, but they were there.
Glad to hear that.
So.
Good, good.
So based on Mr. Kern's representations, it would, it would appear, unless you have something different further, that we just need a motion to continue the rep, the violation?
Yeah, there's, there's, we, we don't have a notice of violation. We, I just sent them a stern letter saying they weren't, in, they were sort of.
Okay, I see what you had. So we're just, we continue, we continue the letter concern, or do you need a motion at all?
Yeah, they needed a little nudge, so we.
Okay, little nudge, okay, so then, um.
I think that's good.
Okay, you, you, uh, okay, uh, then I'll entertain a, a motion, uh, to express or, continue our letter of concern, as it led to it?
Let me see, where are they at? I, I think they're good, actually.
Okay, so you're saying I don't need to take it, we don't need to take any further action?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll see next spring, how it goes, what died.
Okay.
What erosion there is, whatever.
Well, that brings the, next item that we were looking for, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All, for the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? Motion carries.